And could I please get a motion to enter an executive session to return to open session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair so declares, which I do, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Chapter 61A, Piccone.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, doubt they, yes.
Oh, you don't have to poll vote.
Oh, we don't have to poll vote any. Aye. Aye. I'm zoomed, I'm still, sorry. Does anyone on the board have anything under unanticipated?
Madam Chair, I'd like to recognize and introduce our new health officer, Kayla Davis. Her first day was today, and Kayla, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And also a special thanks to Dr. Bridget Sweet for her service in the interim. Thank you, Dr. Sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
Could not have done it without you. And I still have you on speed dial. Not that Kayla will be up to speed immediately, but I do. Okay. Anyone else have anything under unanticipated on the board? From the audience, anyone under unanticipated?
I'm not sure of the protocol. May I take this off to speed?
Yes, you may. You're socially distancing.
I am. Vaccinated. I'd like to begin by saying it's nice of you people to finally show up here.
I know.
We've been here every Monday night for the past 15 months and haven't seen you. The door's been locked. Where have you been? But I'd also like to take this time to publicly thank the town departments, the town clerk for running several elections during this time period, the school department, the council on aging, the police department, the fire department, and additionally, the town manager for maintaining this town in an orderly manner for the past 15 months during a somewhat crisis-type time. So I thank you. Now, my name's Paula Fay. I live at 8309 Oak Point Drive, and I actually am here for two issues. First off is last week, my sister and I forwarded to the town a letter requesting information from the interim director of public health. We have had no response. Obviously, we are aware of the fact that Dr. Sweet is no longer serving that role on a continual basis here in the town, but we copied the Board of Selectmen. In your role as the Board of Public Health, my sister and I do expect a response from the town to our inquiry. So thank you. We look forward to getting it in the very near future. The other issue I'm standing here before you in regards to is your role as the rent board. I want to first thank you for providing the correspondence dated 3/31 from KP Law and the associated communications between KP Law and Sugarman Rogers and whatever, as it goes on, the representatives for Hometown America. But I have a question in regards to the fact that Hometown America was given on the 29th of March 30 days to respond, and now in the documentation, it appears that they have requested an additional 30 days. I don't know the status of that, but I do want to state that I have a serious concern that the town has before it, an issue that's impacting nearly 1,000 households in this community, and I fear that there's going to be a delay. I really feel that the town needs to look at its role as the rent board and institute whatever actions are necessary and not deal with the ongoing delay tactics that Hometown America presents. This is a situation where Hometown America has been violating a policy, the rent procedure for the town, since their purchase. It's a situation where we have rent disparity in that community that runs from approximately known values of $590 a month to $785 a month. It's not acceptable. It's a violation of the town policy. You are the rent board. It's your job to deal with it and not deal with all of their other stories about there's a civil suit, there's this, there's that. Those don't have anything to do with it. Take your job as the rent board and enforce them to follow the rules that have been established in this community. It's a disservice. I've watched you handle King's Way, I believe it's called. I've watched you address dog licenseings, alcohol issues, all on a timely basis. It's your job now to handle this rent policy violation being impacting approximately 1,000 households in this community and to handle it without their impending approach of delaying everything. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Anyone else from the audience have anything under unanticipated?
Boy, it's been a long time, though, since I've been on this side of the podium.
I almost didn't recognize you. Mr. Preventure, how are you?
I am well. Paul Preventure from 17 Barrow Street. Just a little update, we're having Memorial Day coming up a week from today at the Veterans' Memorial Park. We will not be having a parade because it's been so tenuous as to what the governor's requirements are going to be leading into that, so we decided not to have a parade. This year, we'll be having the ceremony in the Veterans' Park. It will be at 10 o'clock in the morning, and we'll be honoring 10 Middleborough veterans. These 10 veterans have served on the Middleborough Veterans' Honor Guard for a number of different years, a number of years, and there's some pretty prominent people that have passed on, and all of them have passed on. So the ones that we will be honoring this year will be Wal Campbell. He started in the American Legion, Sons of the American Legion, when he was seven years old, and he was still with them when he died with the Sons of the Legion, Plus the Legion. Russ Pittsley, 100 years old, almost 101, still on the Honor Guard at the time that he passed. And these two passed within the last few months. Adrian Haynes, an old Indian that was on the Honor Guard for a number of years. Norman Ruckert, who we're going to name an intersection after in the downtown. L. Artelt, Which Battle. Joe Walsh. Charlie Griffin. Bob Jordan. And Richard Ray. So when we, the reason why I bring up those names now is if there's family members out there that haven't gotten the word that we're honoring their family members, please show up at the park at 10 o'clock on next Monday, and we'll do our best to give them a warm appreciation of the work that they did in honoring the veterans of the community at their times of passing. So that's 10 o'clock on Monday. This coming Thursday, at the COA, the Council on Aging, with the help of the main ingredient restaurant, they're giving away to veterans in honor of Memorial Day, a drive-by luncheon of meatloaf luncheon, and you need to call in to make a reservation. And I say this only to get it out through you folks, to the community. The phone number there at the Council on Aging is 508-946-2490, and the pickup time is between 11:00 and 11:30. And like I said, you have to call for reservations, and as of last Friday, they still had several meals that weren't spoken for us, so get on the phone. Anyway, that's all I want to say under unanticipated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience have anything under unanticipated? Moving on to announcements and recognitions, I am pleased to announce that the town of Middleborough is going to have their Fourth of July parade this year. It's been a long time coming. The parade will be held on Saturday, July 3, 2021, starting at 10:00 a.m. Please contact Dave Wiley or Roy Holmes. I have the numbers here. I don't want to give out phone numbers. Just contact the Selectmen's Office if you need to get in touch with someone. I don't want to give the numbers to everyone. So if you're interested in participating, call the Selectmen's Office, and we'll get you in contact with one of those two gentlemen, and we're going to have our parade this year. I'd also like to give a call out to Cut Right on Route 28, new business there where Ruta's used to be. I was driving by looking for plants, figured I'd stop in, got some great plants there. They were very helpful, and local business, please use your local businesses. Anyone else on the board have anything under announcements and recognitions? Anyone from the audience have anything under announcements and recognitions?
Did you miss me?
No. Unfortunately, I can say no.
Glenn Montapurt, Middleborough Tourism Committee, I wanted to add to your announcement that COVID is slowing down, and thankfully, we will have a July 4 parade. The actual parade will be on the 3rd because the July 4 falls on a Sunday, and I bet you already said that.
I just said that.
And I want to also mention that, I was struck by your beauty. I didn't hear everything you said. Carnival is happening this year. So the Parks Department will be putting on the carnival at the Pierce Playground on June 30 through July 4, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and fireworks will be on July 2. And we'll be watching and advertising. Thank you.
That was not harassment, by the way. This is my husband, Freddie, who doesn't know. I just better put that out there. I don't want anybody saying, "That man was harassing her."
Madam Chairman, you can be harassed.
Actually, I know that was part of marriage, so there you go.
I am so harassed.
Boy, how did you twist that around? Anyone else from the audience have anything under announcements and recognitions? Hearing none, moving on. Could I please get a motion to approve the minutes from 5/17/2021?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
As amended.
As amended. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. We didn't have to do a poll vote. Okay. Could I please get a motion to vote to authorize the chairman or her designee to sign the warrants for week ending 5/29/21 and 6/5/2021?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yay. All right, moving on. Veterans Memorial Park request. Mr. Preventure, you're up again.
After a number of years of not being on the leadership role of the veteran, Middleborough Veterans Memorial Park Trust, I took that job back as president a couple of months ago, and it's always been the intent since 2005 to have the town take ownership of the park. The Veterans Memorial Park came about before the time of any of you guys, any of you folks on the board, and it came about when the Board of Selectmen asked myself as the veterans' agent to see if the veterans' community would want to do a Veterans Memorial Park. So I brought that back to the Veterans Council. They said yes. We formed a committee, and the committee is the Middleborough Veterans Memorial Park Committee. Had over 20 members, started in early 2003, and we raised over $200,000 between 2003 and 2005, and made the wonderful park that we have currently, and with always the intent of eventually giving it over to the town. Now, most of the members, or half of the 20 people that were on the original board or committee, have passed on, and the rest of us are getting old, and we're recruiting newer and younger people, and we're starting to be successful at that. However, the maintenance of the park has been something that's a drain of about $3,000 to $5,000 a year. We've had a discussion with Fran Cass about the possibility, since he takes care of the Town Hall Lawn and a number of other locations around town for the mowing and preservation of the properties, and he's willing to do that, and we're willing to give it to him. And there was never any formal agreement between the veterans' organization, the Veterans' Council, and the town in regards to setting up this park, but it's on our Town Hall Lawn, and we did a historic preservation restriction request to the state of Massachusetts under the name of Middleborough, the town of Middleborough, way back in 2004. And so this has been, in reality, the town's park since it was, since we had the dedication ceremony on Memorial Day 2005. So I'd like to see what you all think about this, and hopefully, oh, one other thing. At one point, I became the Selectmen's representative to the Middleborough Veterans Memorial Park and the park trust, okay? Now that I'm retired, I shouldn't be the representative of you folks on that, and so recently, we had a meeting and we met with Jason in regards to this, and Jason has accepted the responsibility of representing you on the Middleborough Veterans Memorial Park Committee and their trust. But anyway, now I'd like to open it up to any discussion that you'd like to have in regards to this.
Comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Well, how would the finances work?
The finances would work that the Veterans Memorial Park Trust became a 501(c)(3) organization very early on, probably around 2004 or so, and they have maintained and been able to expend funds and take in funds, and they're still taking in funds that are very modest amount on the annual basis, and they're spending money out of that trust in a very modest way in regards to the care and maintenance of the park. And so they would like, the Middleborough Veterans Memorial Park Trust would like to hold on to the monies that they have in the trust so that if we have future development that we're going to do in the park, we can do it. If we have some vandalism or situations where, you know, we're not covered under insurance or whatever, although we are under, I believe we're under the town's insurance for that park at this point, we'd have the money to do that. So the only thing we're asking for the town to do is to take over the maintenance of the park. Jason is looking into having a project done, hopefully by Home Depot, of taking out the mulch that's in there, the mulch pits, and replacing them with white stone and replacing a bunch of the bushes, because if you look right now, this is a beautiful week to look at the Veterans Memorial Park. When we look at it on Monday, everything's going to be passed due that's flowering right now, and it's going to look like crap again. But anyway, so we're going to be, we're going to end up, we're going to end up in a situation where hopefully, we'll be able to replace the bushes there with something that'll look good year-round, but that'll be something that'll be worked out through Home Depot, hopefully. And the other thing, other than the maintenance of the park, is the park pays the electric bill for the park. The park trust pays for the electricity going in there. And so we have a number of, we have four streetlights, we have a couple of spotlights, we have fiber optic lighting around the base plate of where the flagpole is, and we have a sump pump going on, we have a fiber optic lighting box going on that people don't see, and that's all coming out of park money. So that would be another thing that would be the ownership, like I said, between $3,000 to $5,000 a year from the town to do that. The monies that we have coming into the park right now, for the most part, are, we're still selling bricks in that Veterans Memorial Park. A normal park project that sells bricks usually sells 200 or 300 bricks, and that's it. We have over 2,200 engraved bricks out there. We have a brick directory stand where you can look up to see where a brick is of a relative or a friend or whatever, and we have still the brick application forms out there. So we're getting in probably 15 or 20 brick application forms a year now that we're this far out from the creation of the park. But, next question.
Anyone else? Questions?
I have a question. So Bob, the park chief, coordinated with them, they can handle this?
Yes, and I checked with, I ran into Mr. Lasire today and asked if there was an agreement with the town. I also mentioned to Jason, who's in the back, if there was some type of agreement, if it's recorded with the Registry of Deeds, and to Jason's knowledge and to Bob's knowledge, there's nothing, an agreement was just, I guess, a gentleman's agreement.
Yep.
Back years back, that the 501(c)(3) would take care of the maintenance, but if there's nothing in writing, no agreement, I guess we could do it. And I talked to Fran about it, and he doesn't have a problem with taking it over.
So it would just be absorbed into the building maintenance, administration costs?
Yes, in the park department budget, yes. I mean, they're out here, as Paul said, they're out here cutting the grass.
Anyway, yeah.
Someday, if anybody's interested in knowing the real history of what happened that caused the park to happen, I'm not going to say that in front of this current board, but I'd be interested in sitting down with any of you at any time and just telling you what happened back in Veterans Day 2002, and that's all I want to say about that.
Okay.
But anyway.
So any further comments from the board? Comments or questions from the audience? Hearing none, could I get a motion to assume the maintenance of the Veterans Memorial Park on the front lawn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The second piece of business, could I get a motion to appoint Jason Cox as the town's representative to the Veterans Memorial Park Committee?
So moved. Second.
You can't get out of it now, Jason. Okay? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, it's too late now.
Just to quickly piggyback on what Mr. Preventure was saying about the Home Depot. I've done, I've done business with the town and Home Depot in the past. When I was the commander of the VFW in Bridgewater, I was able to obtain building materials from Home Depot to build a, excuse me, to build a handicap ramp so our veterans could access our VFW post, and it was, it was a very successful partnership that I was able to maintain with Home Depot, and I'm attempting to continue that. Mr. Preventure mentioned that replacing the mulch with some white, with white stone, thinking into the future, white stone wouldn't have to be replaced on a yearly basis or by annual basis like mulch is. So looking at it at a financial standpoint, it would be, we'd be saving money for the town that way. And if you do browse through the park, you can see that a lot of the bushes and shrubbery are becoming overgrown, and they're blocking a lot of the monuments that are there from the inside. So through negotiations with Home Depot, we're trying to get all the shrubbery replaced, all the mulch replaced with white, you know, crushed white stone, and really just bring some, bring some life into it.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Okay, we're going to not vote, but we are going to have a discussion, right? Oh, no, we do. Could I get a motion, please, to vote on Chapter 61, Fallbrook Realty, Grove Street, on whether to exercise our right of first refusal or not? So if I could get a motion to execute our right of first refusal, and then we'll discuss it.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so from all of our departments, it's a lovely piece of property, the Shobel Farm, we're all aware of it. It's also $24 million, and we don't have that hanging around anywhere, so unfortunately, our departments have recommended not to exercise our right of first refusal. Anyone from the board have any comments or questions about that?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Battistin.
It is a great property, so if there is anybody in town or out of town with $24 million lying around that would like to purchase it and donate it to the town, we would greatly appreciate it.
Town manager can attest to, we have had a developer interested in it, a national developer, who wants to do probably the most, the least invasive thing that they could do there with a building back from the front of the property for distribution, and they are willing to work with us, they've kind of come back, but they're willing to work with us to put a lot of that land under conservation and preserve what's there as well. So there has been interest. Anyone else from the board? From the audience, Mr. Givernoni. I recognize you even with your mask. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian Givernoni, 89 Rocky Meadow. It was disappointing to see a property of this stature disappear like that, a beautiful farm, piece of land, but it's, unfortunately, if we can't afford it, we can't afford it. I did, I scoured through the documents to see if there was any loopholes, and there isn't. In fact, there's even a clause in there that says, even if they don't get their 1.3 million square feet of distribution space, the price will not drop below the 18 whatever million for that portion of the land. I was really disappointed, and I'd like to thank the late Ross Perot for doing this to us. Thank you.
Yes, it's his company.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
I also, I would like to say that obviously, we can't buy all of the land in town, and Middleborough's a very large town, and this is a beautiful piece of property on Route 28, but at the same time, this is going to be commercial development, which is going to bring a sizable amount of tax dollars to the town and not put kids in the school, directly at least. And so, you know, there are worse things that could happen, and if we can preserve more or less the look of the property, that would be, that would be tremendous. And there's also an old furnace on the edge of that property that has to be protected.
They are aware of that. I actually was in on the meeting with Mr. Nunes, and they did seem like they were very much willing to work with the town. So again, unless we have $24 million sitting in our back pocket, I don't see it moving forward. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion to accept this. So a yea on this would be, yes, we have $24 million in our pocket, we're going to proceed. A nay would be saying we will not exercise this. So all in favor?
Nay.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, the nays have it. All right, moving on. The Piccone property, thank you for being so patient. So we, the town, at this point, we would like to be able to exercise our right of refusal for this and take the property out of 61A and exercise that right. However, there are a few things we need to iron out. Technically, if there was not a state of emergency, we would have to do that by next week. As it was a state of emergency, and it has been for the last 15 months, we have 90 days from when the state comes out of that state of emergency, which is June 15. So we have until September 15. We do not want to push it out to September 15. We want to get it ironed out, both all parties involved, the town, the Piconies, the sellers, and the Wildlands Trust, who would be holding the conservation restriction on the property. We want to all be in agreement. So the board came to the conclusion that we would like to move forward and to become in agreement with all parties and then exercise our right, and we will do that as quickly as we can and as soon as we can before September 15. I think I summed it up. Correct? Anyone else, because you did not get a chance to talk to us, want to get up and speak? I know Wildlands Trust wanted to talk a little bit. Go ahead, just introduce yourself and...
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dennis Murphy, members of the board. I'm from Hill Law in Boston on behalf of the Wildlands Trust. The point I wanted to make earlier is that while you are under the declaration of emergency, you also have a defect in the notices you've received. The December 2020 notice included non-designated land as part of the chapter land. You've got a PNS that includes both chapter land and not chapter land. There was a follow-up notice, but no PNS sent on February 1 of this year. It was a letter, I guess you could construe it as a notice, but it's not complete if it doesn't have a PNS. So in order to be a valid, in my view, as a chapter lawyer, I've done this on many occasions for Wildlands Trust, you don't have a valid notice in front of you. So while we have the time, my suggestion would be so that my client can take the assignment, you actually get a notice with a PNS that includes only the classified parcels. We have a price, we have a map, we don't have a PNS. So that was my first point. My second point is that the Wildlands Trust remains very committed to working with the town and with the owners to take assignment of this property, and I think the one thing that they would ask the board before you take any vote, it just so happens that you meet on Mondays, but the site visit is scheduled for sometime later this week. I don't know when it is, so we hope that you all will take the chance to see the property before you make a final decision. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I'd just like to say, any abnormalities in the offer aside and the timeline, the town wants to work this out. We want to do this. We want our party, our attorneys to get together with yours and Wildlands Trust and work it so that everyone is satisfied and we can move forward, whether it's, it probably will be with two different parcels. I'm not the attorney, they'll work that out. You know it better than I do. Did someone from the family want to speak? I don't want to just hog everything.
Madam Chairman, before that, I'd just like to defend purchase and sales agreement in general. You know, as a businessman, I used to say that lawyers and accountants will wreck every deal. So if you want to destroy any deal, bring in lawyers and accountants. My apologies to the lawyers, because I have nothing against you. It's just that when people think about selling a piece of property, obviously, they want to sell the property. They're supposed to get an arms-length offer that is, that is a good offer, which these folks, the Piconies, went ahead and did, and then we have all these issues with it. But the real estate guy that doesn't have, the real estate agent doesn't... But, the real estate guy that, that doesn't have, the real estate agent doesn't have issues, the buyer doesn't have issues, other than if we had the bias. So, I just want to apologize to the Picone's for all the BS that you happen to put up with relative to this. And I do certainly hope we can iron it out so that we don't end up losing this, because this is a real pearl for the town. This is something that we plan to acquire at some length, for the last 25 years we've talked about it. So, let's just hope we can make it happen despite all of these twists and turns. That's what I have to say.
I would like to echo Slepan Rosenthal's sentiments. Unfortunately, because we're a municipality and we depend on government funds in order to do this, we have to jump through these hoops. We just have to, we have no choice. If it was up to us up here, we'd say, okay, come on, let's sign the papers tomorrow, but we can't do it. We have, we are, are constrained as well, so, but I echo his sentiments absolutely. We want to work with you and yes, we'll have till September 15th, but it is our hope that we get it ironed out mu- well before that and can move forward on this. It really is. So, again, if anybody wants to say anything, I, I, I know you came tonight, I appreciate it. We're trying to, you know, keep everybody up to date and aware of what's going on and just know it is our intention to move forward with this and as quickly as possible. However, we have to do it. Okay, anyone else have anything?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Demers, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, at, at one point, many moons ago, I was a real estate agent. It was not the, uh, it's not a fun endeavor for, you know, all parties involved. It's a, you know, it was a little bit of a roller coaster ride and I, and I try to, you know, emphasize to people, you know, just to kind of, just to ride it out and, and just trust each other. I mean, we're, we're all handling this in good faith, we've made no, you know, bones about it. We've, we, it's a re- it's a pearl of the town, it's, it's a fantastic opportunity for the town to acquire a beautiful piece of, of property. So, I would just like to thank you guys for your patience and, and, and willing to work with us, it's really appreciated.
Anyone else from the board? From the audience, go ahead.
Madam Chairperson, Louise Jerry Wells, 9 Chestnut Street. Several years ago, I'm sure you remember, the Middleborough bought a cow, a very big cow, and the cow stretches right down to South Middleborough along Route 28. It's called the cannabis industry. And this cow was projected to produce a lot of milk and, you know, quite a big percentage of proceeds. And I'm wondering, can we not milk the cow or project the milking of the cow and borrow $10 million over five years and pay it back from our cannabis proceeds? Why not? There's got to be something good about that industry. I, of course, I never, I never supported it, but if you're going to buy a cow like that, you may as well use a milk, right? What do you think?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Battistini.
I mean, I think we're allowed to borrow any money that we want, that we approve at town meeting, we just can't say we're going to have to pay it back from cannabis funds.
Right.
That would be up to the taxpayers. We could, I mean, we could have done the $24 million for the Shobel Fund too, but that's, you know, take that expense.
Go ahead.
Hi, Tricia Cassidy, conservation agent. So, I just wanted to tell everybody that we are looking and we're working with other funding sources. Part of that is working with Wildlands Trust to get that other funding sor- you know, a couple of other funding sources that are really critical to the bulk of the purchase. So, I just wanted to say that.
I appreciate it, I know you're working hard.
Yeah, so, Mass Department of Ag, we're working with Ashley Davies from there and she wasn't able to come tonight, but she wanted to express their commitment.
I appreciate it, thank you. It's, it's this close, it really is, we're getting there, I promise. Okay, anyone else from the audience? Moving on, could I please get a motion to vote to approve a contract between the town in Middleborough and Village Green Restoration, an amount of $104,000 for the historic restoration of windows at the Pierce Building? Mr. Floyd, did you want to address this at all? And I would just say this is a part of a larger package that we just, last week approved, we filed for a grant for Destination Development Grant and this is part of a larger piece of work, but go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Did you want a motion on that?
Yes, I do.
So, a motion?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now you can go ahead.
I just, here to answer any questions the board might have regarding this project. I have the scope, bid tabulations, everything that we've got through the procurement process and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Questions from the audience?
Madam Chairman, I, I do have a couple of questions. One is, has town manager approved this as the farm?
I'm sorry.
The town manager, the town council approved it as the farm, this contract?
The contract goes to the assistant to the town manager, who I believe is here. Do you want to address that?
Emily Sret, this is the town manager. We did send this contract to a town council, to Dan, who did look it over and cleared it.
All right. That's good. The other thing I, I wanted to say is that when we deal with these contracts, that obviously we're not dealing with every aspect of these contracts, including what fascinators they're using and all that type of thing. But, if they're putting on 100-year slates on the roof, then we would expect that they'd put the things that hold the slates in place to last 100 years. You understand what I'm talking about, Matt? So, the assumption is that, that in a historic building, that the work is going to be done in a way that is consistent with, you know, both the, the notion of how long we want a building to last and in fact does represent the, the original intent of the building so that what we have when we're done is a building that sort of looks the way it does now.
Precisely.
So, we'll leave that, you know, the fine details of this, obviously we're looking at some of the stuff, but we don't have all the fine details. But, that certainly is the intent of the board in coming along and, in doing these contracts. And if there's any question, you know, if it's a few more bucks or whatever to do it the right way, well, then I think that this board would probably support that rather than do it some other way.
Right. This is funded through CPC money and the allocation is up to $110,000, so there is some contingency in there. And this scope was written between myself and Ted Ayers, who is, who's got an awful lot of experience in this type of work and Village Green, that especially is a historic restoration.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we have a motion on the table, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Moving on, could I please get a motion to vote to approve Best Buddies Challenge Bike Ride to be held on Saturday, October 2nd, 2021 and the roadway route as indicated? And I believe the police chief and fire chief have weighed in on this and we have their okay. So, could I get a motion, please?
Remove.
I have a motion, do I have a second? And a second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, moving on. Could I please, okay, we're going to discuss the code of conduct. Several of our department heads and actually myself as well attended a seminar by the Mass Municipal Association and for town liability, they highly recommended having a code of conduct for elected officials to protect the town should an elected official go rogue and the town can then prove that we did have a code of contact and, and conduct and it was actually the official that broke the, the code and the town does not condone it. We have this in here, I believe it's attached, I'm getting through all the documentation. And I wanted to bring it up to the board because several department heads, like I said, requested it. I didn't realize there were 500 on a Zoom, 500 of us on a Zoom call and I didn't realize that there were actually other department heads from the town there, so. They don't put all our little pictures up there. Okay, so here we go. This is an example of one that they, that they presented to us and I, it makes, I mean, it's, it's pretty much common sense, you know, that you act civilly in your capacity that you've been elected to or appointed to. Many other municipalities have adopted these and as I said, it does decrease the liability for the town. So, I brought it here to see if the board was interested in adopting this.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
I hate this agreement.
Okay.
And I hate it for several reasons. Number one is that, that basically, in my opinion, it muzzles to some degree the selectmen. And when I took this job, I took this job as a representative of the people. I didn't take this job as a cheerleader for the town employees or anything like that. And so, there are times when I think that as a selectman, I need to speak out on things that might not necessarily endear me to certain town employees. Now, obviously, I'm dead against all of the things that everybody's against, like bullying or sexual harassment or being totally inappropriate and swearing at town employees or, or trying to force people to do things because you think you have the power when we obviously don't. The only time we have any powers is when the meeting is a board, other than that, we have no power. But, some of the stuff in here really bothers me, such as in the conduct in relation to town staff. It says, "Never publicly criticize an individual employee or a department. Concerns about staff performance should only be made to the town administrative manager through private communication." Well, it could well be that I would find a department's behavior on a particular piece of work, a particular project or anything, either not adequate or offensive to me or whatever. And if the only way I can deal with that is going through the town manager, who might not see it my way, then I virtually have no ability either to criticize that, that work or in fact to do anything about it, other than arguably to try and fire the town manager if he didn't agree with me. And I certainly don't see that as being appropriate at all. And then, on the distribution and education, we're saying, "Each individual shall sign a statement that they have read this policy and will comply with our requirements set forth in this policy. In the event that any member declines to sign the form, that fact shall be noted by the town clerk on the form." So, I mean, if that isn't an implicit threat, I don't know what is. I don't care, like I said, I don't care for this at all. I want a legal opinion as to what I could and couldn't say, but based on this, if I went along with this, I would feel very anxious about frankly saying anything ever about any town department or any town employee and I don't think that's what I'm here to feel. I think I'm here to, as I said, represent the people of this town and in some cases, that puts me in conflict with some of the, conflict with some of the staff. Now, frankly, we just did the evaluations of the town manager and our executive assistant and I gave them high marks. I don't have any problem at all with, with these two folks currently or with anyone else really, other than that there are times when I frankly disagree with things they've done and I want to be able to, i- if it's necessary, address it publicly. Generally speaking, I don't address it publicly, I do work through whatever it is to deal with these, but there, there might be a time when I would need to speak out on this and I certainly don't want to forfeit my right to do so.
I hear you. I don't think the intention of this, of course, this can be something we disagree on, but we're not going to come to blows over it.
No.
Exactly, but that, that being the point. At this point, there, there is no way to ensure that all appointed or elected officials are wanting to act in, in a respectful manner. And it has happened in many places where they don't. In fact, in the town, the school committee has adopted such a policy to keep things civil. I, I respect how you feel and I would not want any policy to keep you from saying what you feel you need to say. However, sometimes people need some kind of a guideline or they just need to be told that the town will not tolerate disrespectful conduct. Anyone else from the board?
Madam Chairman, if, if I might respond to what you just said, it's odd that you picked the school committee because the school committee, when I served on it years ago, was a problem for me. Might I actually criticize the school committee or do I have to not because of this?
If you're polite and say what you liked about it, what you didn't like about it, you're welcome to go ahead.
The school committee fundamentally are cheerleaders for the administration and the only real option they have is to either fire or live with whoever is running the show. All their information comes through the administration, comes through the superintendent of schools. They're not supposed to, at least when I was there, interact with any of the school teachers or the principals or anything without going through the administration. And it dramatically restricts the information they get and how they're able to handle it. And I only stayed on the school committee for a very brief time and then I jumped and ran for selectmen. And anyway, that's my story, I think I was on there for nine months, I was friends with the superintendent of schools, but he and I differed on what I was allowed to say. And if you read the, the literature relative to school committee members, you'll find that's their primary job is to support the administration of the school committee rather, rather than in my opinion necessarily represent what's in the best interest of the citizens.
I, I hear you. There's a big difference between a civil interaction and an abusive one and right now the town has, is wide open as far as liability goes, it does, because we have not communicated to elected officials or appointed officials that they are expected to act in a certain manner. Not that they have to believe certain things or they can't say certain things, but this is opening the town to liability, not having some kind of a guideline. And it's also giving elected and appointed officials a free hand to do or say whatever they want in an abusive manner to staff or co-board members. Mr. Givernoni, I can see you want to say something.
Madam Chair, if I might, as a former member of a school committee for over nine years, I do take a little offense to say that the, the role of the school committee is to be the cheerleaders for the administration because that is absolutely 100% false. And if somebody who served on the school committee thought that, then they were wrong. The role is to support the school system. Now, is it fair that a school department would get a 12% increase in the budget when the other departments and the entire general government get a half a percent? No. So, someone has to speak up. When I saw 7% increases, I voted against budgets. I voted against more budgets than I voted for on that school committee and you know how many people in this town listened? None. But, I didn't just go out and vote willy-nilly and neither did a lot of other people. Why we had this was because you put something together, a sheet of paper, to discuss certain things. And I'll tell you, it took us four workshops to actually get through it, two hours apiece to actually hammer something through. Because the biggest thing is to not stop people's First Amendment rights to speak. We discussed this, I don't know who was on the board, but it was discussed when there was going to be a social media policy in this town. And as New England School of Law said, you walk in a slippery slope, so you've got to be very careful. The code of conduct is not a bad thing. This one may have gone a little far, but I think that if you went through it, it wouldn't be a horrible thing to have. Because right now, you have a board that seems to work well for the last year. But, three years ago, every night in this, every Monday night in this room as I sat in here, it was ugly. And it was ugly, ugly, ugly. The code of conduct, the best time to do it is when everyone gets along and you come up with a fair set of rules. Because what ends up happening is you end up with what's going on in Washington, which is one party wants a filibuster and the other one doesn't. And then, when they switch powers, the other part, the party wants it and the other party doesn't. So, what you do is you set up some rules that are fair, not overreaching and all that so that if there is a problem, how to resolve it? Because that's the biggest thing. And as far as, you'll never lose your First Amendment right because you are, you are a selectman, but you're also a citizen and they are two separate items. You always have a voice. But, as a school committee member, I was never stifled in my free speech, even with our code of conduct.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Where I got in trouble with the school committee was when I felt compelled to tell the folks who live in town that 49% of the kids coming out of junior high school were flunking at least one course in high school. And that was an absolute no-no to make that public. But, it did change policy and ultimately, it changed the way we educated our, our junior high school kids and, you know, obviously, when the new school came, came in, the, what's the name of the new school? The Nichols School, yeah, the Nichols School. Why, things were quite different than, because before that, if you weren't on the green team in, in what's now the MAC, you were just doomed. And even if you were on the green team, you were lucky if you got a decent education. So, you know, that was my contribution and it didn't go over well with, believe me, with the administration of those in power, but it was necessary to tell people what was happening and I did. And that's exactly the kind of thing that I wouldn't be able to do if I went along with this policy. And so, I can't personally go along with this policy, no matter what they do to me. I don't know what they're going to do to me if I don't. But, I also will say that most of the stuff that's covered by this, we already have covered. We already have a social media policy that some selectmen simply chose to violate. And the option is to censor the, a selectman, well, that always was an option, but nobody ever really wants to do it. And, and then, as far as sexual harassment policy, clearly we have that kind of policy, bullying, I'm sure we have those kind of policies. So, a lot of this is redundant. It just seems to me that what this wants to do is take it that one step further and fundamentally control our behavior to the degree where we really can't say anything other than everybody, everything is wonderful, folks, even though- other than, everybody, everything is wonderful, folks, even though things have gone bad, everything's wonderful, and I'm not for that.
Thank you. Ms. Fay.
Diane Fay, 8309 Oak Point Drive. I couldn't sit and let it go by with some of what was said. My past life, I was vice president for Massachusetts AFL-CIO, that's your major union, and I was president for Northern New England for AFME, which is the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. And I will tell you that if I ran across a town, allowed their management or their elected officials to treat an employee that I represented in the manner that Mr. Rosenthal was just describing, that he felt he had a right to speak him out, tell him what he felt, I would have chewed you up and spit you out. Because I would not tolerate anyone speaking to my members in a manner that was disparaging in front of the public or in front of a town. I would take exception to it. You could speak to my member, and if they wanted their union with them, they could bring their union with them. You spoke to them in a private setting in a meeting. And trust me, people weren't fast to do it. But with the same respect, if I had one of my members be disrespectful in front of a management person, and I did have it happen, where a gentleman at a negotiation session was very crude and very inappropriate in what he said to a woman who was in charge of one of the hospital units, I put him out of negotiations and sent him back to his job. And I then met with the woman. I also apologized publicly and had him come in afterwards at the next public session. Public in the sense all union members could attend, and apologized to her. I do not tolerate things like that. I do know that, I believe, AFME does represent some of the workers in this town, or they used to. But I never had a problem with them when I was here. My problems were with the big cities, that people felt they had a right to do that. It's just not appropriate. So I would support this, but I think it has to be very carefully crafted. You can't do blanket assessments of things. But I would say, you know, it would be a major problem for me. And in some cases, you might end up before the Labor Commission if it was with me.
Madam Chairman, if I might respond. We already have rules here that you can't disparage someone's character, or, if you really want to talk about someone's character, you have to give them the opportunity to do either an open or executive session. So we already have rules to protect employees. What I'm talking about are work products. If I see a product that someone has produced or a position they've taken, I have to feel free to criticize that particular product. And if I can't, I can't do the job that the people elected me to do. If I have to just say, oh, this is all great, you know, no matter how bogus or bad it is, you know, because they've worked hard at it or whatever, I just don't think that that's appropriate. But I have never, and I negotiated a ton of contracts with AFME and everyone else. I have never been out of line with any employee since I've been here in this town, and I basically don't have that much interaction with anyone, other than on Monday nights, I come in here, I set policy. I know what the limits are on board as a selectman member. And basically, that's to come in here, set policy, more or less stay away from other members, at least don't discuss business with them, and basically, stay away from the employees for the most part. So I'm not one to tell employees what to do, to try and pressure them or anything else, or do anything that is out of line. I'm simply saying that my basic responsibility here is not to the employee, but it's to the people of the town of Middleborough. And they have every right to know the truth, and sometimes the truth is not necessarily pleasant to hear. That's all.
Ms. Fay.
The other Ms. Fay, Paula Fay.
The other, the other one.
8309 Oak Point Drive. I just want to state that I actually think that this would be beneficial for the town, because in the past month or so, I've observed at different meetings of various committees, boards, whatever we want to call ourselves as we go across, that there are some concerns that we should have relative to do, although Mr. Rosenthal says, you know, you should be able to critique work and things like that. I have watched members of elected bodies in this town critique work based upon what their experience in life or their employment in life is all about. And they're critiquing not only town employees, they're critiquing contractors. Those types of things should not be done. You are elected officials at that level. You are not the ones that pull up to a work site and decide that you're going to have a one-on-one and maybe upset the contractor hired by the town to represent work that the town is asking to be done. So I really do think that there needs to be some limitations and some education of members of this committee that sits before me, the board in front of me, that although they may have some skill sets, that that's not their job. The town of Middleborough, or at least myself, if I voted for said person, did not vote for that person to take whatever their individual skill is and use that to bully contracted employees or employees of the town by making comments about, well, that isn't how I would do it. That's not your role. So I think that's a great idea. I'd say, go for it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Germaine.
I agree with Selectman Rosenthal. Out of three people, you don't. I wouldn't be in favor of signing this policy. And as far as Ms. Fay's comment goes...
Which one?
Ms. Fay?
Which one?
Ms. Paula Fay. As far as her comment goes, you know, part of being elected official is doing what's best for the town. So if you go out to a job site and you see work getting done that is not up to the, some par, I should say, I would hope that you would mention it to somebody so we can correct them, especially if you have experience in that field.
But to you, to you, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Germaine's, I'd like to state that I think if you have experience, yes, you can take that, but you don't do it at a public meeting. You don't do it, you don't interact with the contractor. You don't do that. You are not a town employee from that standpoint. You are not responsible for the contract. The town of Middleborough has hired and paid people who have that as a role. Please let them do their job. And don't worry, Mr. DeMure, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Germaine, it was not you I was speaking to.
I was going to clarify that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DeMure.
So to clarify, it is I who Ms. Fay is addressing. I believe that in that situation, I don't think you know the entire story. I believe that the way I've handled that, if I see something in town that is not being done to my standards, I have the right to address that. You know, for the record, it was addressed privately through email. It wasn't, I don't believe I handled it inappropriately. If I see something that relates to my expertise, I have the right to comment on that, to which I did. And I think I addressed it fairly with all parties. So that's quite frankly my prerogative. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fay, just briefly.
I would just like to reference the last Oliver State Advisory Committee meeting for the people in the public who would like to watch that and hear the presentation. I think that will identify where my concern is and why I definitely feel there is a need for that policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Rosenthal.
I learned something. I happen to be in the Oliver State Advisory Committee, and what I learned is that there are some things in the contracts that the selectmen sign that aren't spelled out. As a matter of fact, I just made that point to Mr. Foy, that we have to be very careful because the selectmen aren't going to catch everything, because let's face it, the selectmen aren't our contractors. And what we want is to make sure that the product we're getting, that we're getting our money's worth. So if we buy slates for roof tiles that are supposed to last 100 years, we don't want plastic things to hold them so that after 20 years, they come sliding off the roof, because that's not getting our money's worth. So I guess I learned something from that that I didn't know before, relative to some of these contract bids we're getting, where the low bidder gets the job, and in many cases, they want to substitute inferior materials. Now, if anybody here has been on any building committee, it is absolutely routine to criticize certain aspects of the job in open session at these building committee meetings. If you couldn't do it, you wouldn't get anywhere. And, yeah, we hire OPMs and everything to take care of it, but they bring up issues. There are constantly issues being dealt with, and they're not dealt with in a nasty, personal way, but they're dealt with to make sure that the town is getting value for what it's getting. Not everything is nice and sunny and wonderful. And that you have to have people who are watching out for the common good and for the tax dollars that the individuals, that the residents of this town are paying in the government. And it's just that simple. This is, as I say, this, in my opinion, will cause people like myself to question every word I say relative to who I might offend or who might decide that, you know, I'm out of bounds. Just like Ms. Paula Fay criticized and thinks that we were totally inappropriate at the Oliver State Advisory Committee, I would advise anyone who's interested to watch that meeting.
Okay. So we're getting a little bit off here. I don't think the Code of Conduct here is to stifle elected officials or appointed officials if they have something they want to contribute or say. This is my opinion. I'm not getting the feel from the board that they want to continue with this. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Battistini.
If the board decided to move forward with this, I would also like to get the feeling of the town clerk, since she would be responsible for providing a copy of this policy and maintaining records for it, a lot of which already has to do with current laws we have, with ethics and open meeting law and all that kind of thing. So if we decide to move forward with this, I would like to get her opinion before it's instituted.
Okay. Anyone else from the board?
Madam Chairman, I move that we do not move forward with this in its current form.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of not moving forward with this in its current form?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're not moving forward with it in its current form. I would, however, suggest people look at this on the board. Don't put it away completely. See if there are things you would change, things you would include, things you would not include. I'm not going to point the finger at anyone, but I have seen over 12 years of in government here, many abuses carried out by both elected and appointed officials that are just inexcusable. And if this is the kind of policy that we need to implement in order to stop that, then we need to implement it. That's all I'm going to say. Go ahead, Mr. DeMure.
I believe that that policy is a good start. I think there's some obvious issues in there that we need to address and refine. But I think on the whole, it's a good idea to have somewhat of a conduct policy in town so that way, when someone goes rogue, we have something to fall back on.
Thank you. So I don't want to shelf it completely. Look at it, please, everyone. Okay, moving on. Could I please get a motion to vote to support the restoration of the carriage house doors on the Oliver State for Historic New England specifications and award the bid? We'll get the motion, and then we'll have our facilities director give us a brief explanation.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Foy.
Well, let's see where that was. Well, this ought to be good. Thank you, Madam Chair. I did get a question from Selectman DeMure about the methods of doing this particular restoration, and I took those questions and forwarded them to Historic New England for advice and their opinion. With that, they came back and asked whether the entire board to have any questions. We sent that out to an email. I did not get any response. They were willing to come to the meeting tonight to answer those questions, where we didn't get any response as of late this afternoon. Any emails, they are not here. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have about this project.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. DeMure.
So I did read the email from Historic New England, and basically, they offered basically one paragraph summary of the various projects going on there. I do have a couple of questions. One thing that isn't mentioned in here, but that was mentioned in the proposal that you sent out to the contractors, was, you know, racking the doors. Could you explain that process and how you would go about doing that?
Okay. So, the barn doors of the Oliver House, I'll just read the first proposal. Our plank construction on a Z-frame with clinched nails and large cast iron strap and pental hinges. The doors have racked significantly, and there is rot associated with loss of the base. What that means is, those doors, over time, a pental hinge is basically a hole. Back in 1769, they punched a hole, which was a hand-driven hinge into the door frame. The door, over time, puts weight on it, and the doors start to look like the tops of your fingers. Rather than being across, they start to sag, and the hinges get worn. So they proposed to take those doors, remove the paint chemical stripper, re-rack with clamps and ties, and get those doors so they're not so saggy on the hinge side. So that's what they mean by re-racking. I had a couple other people come out, one that submitted a proposal, one who did not, and he is in agreement, the same thing. Pull the doors apart, re-rack, then get the arch to properly fit the doorway, and then re-secure it, fasten it, cut the bottoms off, move it up slightly, and epoxy consolidate the hinges to get those hinges back horizontal. So basically, like Selectman Rosenthal said, when we're done, it looks like it did, it looks like it's right, and it's supposed to be historically accurate, so.
Okay. So, I mean, I look at the pictures that you provided. There is some bracing on the back of those doors that I would characterize as deteriorated. I'm concerned that if you're going to detach that, those boards will, are not going to be suitable to be reused. Is there anything in here that lists, you know, any new wood to be used for cross-bracing?
For cross-bracing, no. That would be something when they pull that apart and re-rack it, if the intent of Historic New England is to use as much usable original wood as possible. I would, and I have argued with them over the months and years, that those doors are kind of gone beyond repair. It is a historic feature of the property. It is, when you first drive in, that's where you've got the tree in the barn and the carriage house doors, rather. Personally, if we took some wide plank boards and replaced those boards with new and painted them gray, you wouldn't be able to tell them we'd have a new set of doors. That's not what they want. They want to use as much original wood as possible. When those doors get pulled apart, which we learned today, Tom Mairde Nunez and I learned what deadheading a nail was today from Mr. Stevens, when they pull those apart, and if there is any damage to the wood, we have to address that as it comes. But the wood on the Z-frame is not rotted, it's the bottom of the doors that are rotted. And there will be some new wood in there, whether it's pine or oak, depending upon what Historic New England, they've given us the choice of either, since it's painted. But that's the intent, is to use and salvage as much wood as possible, original.
So how would that, the new wood be attached to the bottom of that door?
All right. So, per Historic New England, rotted sections of the wood at the bottom edge of the carriage doors to be removed just past the point of rot. These sections to be replaced with new pieces. If white oak or salvaged pine cuts to match the dimensions of the sections were removed, the joinery method along the horizontal edge is left to the discretion of the carpenter. So whether it's doweling, biscoting, or it's left to the discretion of the carpenter. I can change that if you have a recommendation which would suit you better.
I can give this to you.
Sure.
But basically, I would cross that last part out, left to the discretion of carpenter, and I would add, to be either dowelled using solid oak dowels or using a domino joinery. And if you don't know what that is, brought it in for you. And I would also add, this, basically, this paragraph, any deterioration in the middle of the door is to be repaired via Dutchman or epoxy. Let's see. Want to correct the current sag as best as possible with a new arch being cut along the tops. Because even if you re-rack that door, there is going to be some, you know, variations in the reveal from the top of the door to the arch. So there's going to have to be some cutting along the top. Let's see. That's, I mean, that's really basically it. I saw one inconsistency in terms of actually doing the stripping. One quote said, using a chemical stripper. The other one says sanding. Is there, has that been ironed out to which method?
No, one, we're getting more bang for our buck. The higher bid did not want to do any painting. I did call in today to clarify, because the wording on the bottom is corner board to be replaced and joined, painted, resulting in a finished, original appearance. My question was, is the corner board just painted in your proposal, or is the whole thing? His response was, the paint is included on the doors, it's a complete job.
Okay. Lastly, I would add, I know that the Boy Scouts are looking for some opportunities to volunteer for the town. Would that be something that, would it be possible to have the Boy Scouts paint the doors instead, and that would save the town some money?
Paint the doors?
Yes.
Yeah, we could do that. If there are Boy Scouts available, I don't want to leave them blank.
Yep. Yep.
So if they are available, we just finished up one project today. We have one other scout who's past 18, he's got about one month on his extension, which was granted because I denied him a year ago because of COVID, and I don't have any other Boy Scouts lined up at the moment.
That's it.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Demers.
If I may, you've already solicited proposals. Are these changes going to alter the bids, submittals?
Madam Chair, through you, I cannot agree to that without seeing it, and I also have to run that through Historic New England to see if it's satisfactory to them, just so we're aware. The property does have a preservation restriction agreement. I will take that forward to Historic New England. If they are not happy with it, we can't do it. So, and they will recommend changes and I will bring that back to the board.
What I'm saying is the proposals that you have this evening, obviously it's going to change from what was just discussed.
Oh, it is.
So.
I don't, I don't believe that these-
Here we are, we went out for a project and we're changing it at the last minute. That's not a good business practice.
I don't believe that these-
All the time spent on this, all the time he has spent on this, and now we're changing it at the last minute. I thought we were doing, we were going to avoid this. This is not a good business practice, and you've had plenty of opportunity to talk to us to follow about this.
Not prior to the bid actually being sent out.
Okay, so-
This has been going on for months.
All right, so, Mr. Foy, you understand what Selectman Demers was asking for? In here, it says, the contractor's discretion. Would it violate the procurement law if you said, can you do it this way?
I would have to go back to everybody I've asked and have them re-submit it.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Demers.
So if the bottoms of the doors fall off in a year, what then?
If we put up new doors like I'd like, that wouldn't happen, but we do have a preservation restriction agreement.
Well, I'm just offering a solution that would prevent this from happening, and recent history has suggested that, you know, my suggestions have gone ignored.
Okay, we're talking about them now, so let's not, let's not do past history. We're talking about this now. How can we move forward and have? Yes, go ahead, Mr.-
I believe Mr. Foy mentioned biscuit joint or oak dowel, was that what he said?
Or a method up to the discretion, and that is one of the choices that was verbal, it's not in the contract.
Is there a third method or are those the only two methods?
That's the third method there.
Okay. We have a preferred method, maybe, and not change the-
According to HNE, it is up to the discretion of the-
Right, well, we have two things we're talking about here. Historic New England with their restoration, or their historic preservation restriction procurement law. We are talking about two different things here. So, obviously, it's got to go through Historic New England to be approved. What we need to know is how we can specify in the procurement that we prefer this method over the other.
I believe that's on the highlighted page that you have. That would be-
Yeah.
Yep, so we'd have to start over again if we were to get that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Battistini.
What's the current timeframe looking for this if we went with the bids we already have?
This is a cultural facilities grant, I believe, our economic, do we have a deadline on the, on the CSF grant?
CSF grant, I believe, 2022.
How much time would you need to make the adjustment to say what our preferred detail is for this?
I'll take that, bring that to Historic New England. When they respond, I'll put it back out to the people who have expressed interest, so.
So you'll get the approval first from Historic New England and then from the three bids, or however many bids you had, you would ask them?
So I have built a reputation with Historic New England, they are very happy with what we're doing, they're happy with the town of Middleborough, and I want to keep that relationship strong.
I just know we have discussed this in the past, and you've even said we should have maybe a stipulation on our bids when we go out, that someone has done historic work already, so they would know the preferred method. So, and we've also talked about, on Oliver State bids, that we should try to put as much detail as we can in the actual procurement, the RFP, for procurement. So, how long would you have to give them? Three weeks? What is the law, the procurement law, not Historic New England?
As far as asking?
Yes.
There is no timeframe on the ask when it goes to bid a higher bracket, but this lower bracket, there is no timeframe as long as I ask. I'd give them a reasonable amount of time.
Right, okay. Mr. Nunes.
Madam Chair, this may trigger in excess of $10,000, because one of the bids was close to $10,000.
Correct.
So I would suggest that you advertise it and not call these individuals, and if they want to bid, let them bid.
Okay.
Because this could be tailored for a particular contractor, we don't know. I think you should open it up to everyone to bid.
That's fine. The reason is before the board, is the board acts as one unified body, so I, when I have a question for one, I bring it back to-
Right, it would just be this detail you'll be changing in the RFP, so it won't be, hopefully, as much work as it was, okay?
That's okay.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Battistini.
Percy, I think we should just go with the bids we have and make a decision for that. If Historic New England's okay with it and our professional that we fired was okay with it?
These are both qualified proposals that I have. I haven't seen the higher of the two bids, I haven't had the experience of their work. The lower of the two, I know they do a lot of historic restorations.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, and that would be for this, this actual bid, which is to Perkins Quality Construction for $9,865. How does the board wish to proceed? Do they want to proceed with this or do we want to go-
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I do have a lower bid for-
Oh, sorry.
$8,200 from Village Green Restoration in writing.
Okay, missed it, thank you. So it's from Village Green for $8,200. That's the one we would be awarding to then, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so-
If for, this is an older bid, if the timeframe doesn't allow and they refuse in writing, then we can move up, but as of right now, we are bound to go with the lower bid.
Okay. So the lower bid is $8,200 for Village Green, so pleasure the board. Do you want to proceed with this bid or do you want to go out again for RFP?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Jermaine.
Would it be inappropriate to just ask the contractor if he would do it one way or the other?
Yes, that's why we're talking about this.
That changes the scope.
Because it changes the scope-
If I change one thing, I have to change everything.
Changes scopes.
But doesn't it say in the RFP, it's one way or the other for discretion, well, two ways to do it, right?
I think we're splitting here, if we end up going with the higher of the two bids and the lower bid can get right on the phone with the AG. We've got to do it the right way.
What you do is, one, whoever responds, you have to be fair to all of them and give them all a chance to respond with the change or the specification. So-
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Could I ask Selectman Demers whether this is important enough to go with this, putting it out to bid again, in your experience?
I mean, the last thing I'm going to want to see happen is the town spend $10,000 and then doors falling apart in a year, and then having to go back to the drawing board and then doing this again. I believe that there are some cost-saving measures that we can do. We can have, you know, we can have, we can ask the Boy Scouts if they're interested in painting, painting them, because it's been, they've expressed it in one of the emails that they're looking for things to do. So I think that a phone call wouldn't hurt, and I believe that the, the process that I personally have done, I don't want, I hate going back on my, my experience, but I've been doing this for 20 years. I have experience in historical work, I have experience in architectural woodworking. I believe that this is the best way to do it. So if we have to go back to the drawing board and be specific about what we want and how to do it, that's my belief, and I'm only one member, but that's, that's my opinion.
So, so obviously, it is important in your, in your mind. I also would reference the fact that, that when we did talk at the Oliver House Advisory Committee, that you said that the board's selectance meeting was the place to catch these things and change them, and so I suppose that's what we're doing here.
Well, what I-
Yeah.
Before it goes out to bid, though.
Right, what, what I meant by that was when it's all said and done, it's not the time to Monday morning quarterback. We hash it out now and everybody's in agreement, this is the way we're going to go versus what had happened in the past. That's what we did.
Mr. Nunes.
Also, I just want everyone to know that Mr. Foy, our facilities manager, knows what he's doing as well. He's been in this field for how many years?
He was three when I started facilities.
Okay, so you, you have a lot of experience as well. Thank you, for the record.
Okay, how does the board want to proceed?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Demers.
I would just like to add that I think Matt does a fantastic job with, you know, the work he does in all the town, the town buildings. You know, there's things that Matt knows that I couldn't even know in 100 years, and that's not, you know, there's not a shot at you or by any way, and I want to make that known, and I think you do tremendous work. I just, when I see something like this and there's plenty of ambiguity in here, I just wanted to address, because recent history has shown that it needs to be addressed. So, that's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, it's not up to me. Someone has to make a motion to-
We've already got a motion on the floor to-
And that would be to award this bid to proceed and award it to Village Green Restoration for $8,200.
Sorry, call them up.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're going to proceed with this one.
Thank you.
But before you go out, if not-
She calmly does another vote.
There were three in favor to against.
Okay.
She's asking.
Well, I'm asking. No, I think it was four to one?
Four to one.
I said, I said no.
Okay, yeah.
I said no.
Okay, no, you're right, and it was three to two, you're right.
Three to two.
However, you can proceed. I would ask in the future, before it goes out for the RFP, for us to see it, and then if someone catches something, then we won't have to go through this again, okay?
Okay.
That's all. All right, thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr.-
Just sometimes it's hard to deal with these things before, you know, you see the stuff in front of you and everything. This isn't simple stuff, particularly this historic restoration. So, you know, I certainly am glad to have Selectman Demers' experience on the board.
Right, and if, if we get what is in the RFP, the work, the scope of work that is being proposed in the RFP before it goes out, we wouldn't have to discuss, well, are we going to put it out for an RFP again? That's all I'm saying. The earlier we get it, the better. Okay, thank you. Yep, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, there's no, I'm here every day.
I know you are.
I will do this until we get it right. There's no way.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Akersstrom, you are up. Could I please get a motion to vote to approve the Commonwealth's Community One Step for Growth application on the Pierce Building reuse improvements and authorize the town manager to submit?
Sub move, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So last week, we authorized to apply for the Development Capital Grant Destination, and now we have one that's piggybacking on it for the same project. Go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair and Board, this is a community one-stop grant process. It's a clearinghouse that the Commonwealth has put together of 10 different grant opportunities. We have a deadline of June the 4th to get this grant in, and so we're coming to a little bit early because we won't be needing next week to get the approval to put this grant in. We're asking for approximately $327,000 from, at this point, we're thinking the underutilized properties grant in order to fund certain work within the Pierce Building. Three years ago, as you know, the Pierce Building was approved to reuse by the Board of Selectmen at that time, and we've been pursuing funding ever since. Every few years, we try to apply for a grant. We have the Community Facilities Fund grant, which we got for $110,000 to do the windows on the building, and then a couple of CPA grants, and this is the one that we're applying for through the one-stop. And I don't know if you have any questions about the specifics, but like the chair has mentioned, it's going to be piggybacking on the other grant, and together we hope to kind of work on Phase One and Phase Two of the renovations of that building to start with, and then from there, we will continue to find other funding.
And it's the same end as the Destination Grant was, getting us in there next summer, so.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Could you briefly explain the new one-stop program, just so the folks who are watching this who have some idea?
Well, excuse me. The Commonwealth have tons and tons of different grants available for everyone, and they're all at different times of the year, and so they decided to pull together 10 grants under three different departments or divisions of the Commonwealth operations. And of those 10 depart, of those 10 grants, you, well, I'll say, you put the, you put the grant application in the door. It's a, it's a clearinghouse. It's, it's reviewed by all of the different department representatives to see where the different grants would fit best, depending on what is in your grant, and then that grant is then funneled to those people in order to review that particular prop, project, and if it doesn't quite fit, they will send it on to a different department that they think fits. So it's kind of a real, it's a time saver.
So in essence, you have to file once, but then you can be viewed by a multiple of different grants, a multiple number of grants.
Right, it's a clearinghouse, exactly.
Yep.
So we file once, we're going to file a couple of, couple of grants, I believe, coming through here, and they will be reviewed by all of these different grant programs to see where this, each particular grant fits.
Designed to cut out some of the red tape and streamline.
Yeah, because it's crazy. Trying to keep up with the grant dates is insane.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? From the audience? Hearing none, we have a motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Okay, and could I please get a motion to vote to approve the Middleborough Friends Concert Series on the town lawn? Yes. I have a motion. I have a motion and a second, and you want to briefly give us when and how and what?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I just want to say that they say that the wood products are going to go down in price by 22 or 23, so maybe we'll get a discount on that contract. My name is Brian Jimmerni from the Middleborough Friends. We're looking at the 15th annual, even though we missed last year, 15th Annual Concert Series. It was started two years before we took over by Gene Spalding and Colaruso and Pavadore. They really started, but it's been great. We have great time and it's great to get back to normal. Maybe we won't be using these masks, and we're inviting everyone to come out starting June 15th, if you approve it. We'll stop putting all kinds of information out there, so I'm hoping you guys approve this, and I'm hoping we'll be rocking and rolling every Thursday night for the rest of the summer and getting back to normal.
And when is it you're starting again?
Hopefully, June, July 15th.
July 15th?
I'm sorry, July 15th. July 15th.
Can't wait, can't wait.
Absolutely.
Yep. Any comments or questions from the board? From the audience? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, passage unanimously. Okay, moving on, a 7:30 hearing. It's about right, 8:30. Okay, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at the Town Hall, 10 Nickerson Avenue, Middleborough, Mass. Isn't that nice? Monday, May 24th, 2021, at 7:30 PM for the purpose of discussing an application filed by RJ O'Connell and Associates for a special permit under the Water Resource Protection District bylaw to allow for the maintenance and repair of the existing paved areas on the site and for the construction of an additional small parking area for 16 parking spaces. The new parking area will include a new drainage system that will comply with MASTEP Stormwater system that will comply with MASTDEP Stormwater Handbook design requirements. The additional impervious area will be three-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-two square feet, which is approximately one percent of the existing impervious area on the site. Additional impervious area will be outside of the one-hundred-foot wetland buffer. The property is located in the general use district and in Water Resource Protection District Zone Three. This is shown on Assessors' Map 064, lots 5572 and 4773. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. It's open. Go ahead.
Good evening. Just for the record, my name is Brian Dundon. I'm a civil engineer with the Engineering Firm of RJ O'Connell and Associates. I do have with me tonight Mr. Joseph DiLorenzo from the Seon Group, who is the owner of the property. As mentioned, we are here tonight requesting a special permit pursuant to Section Eight of the zoning board, requesting to increase the amount of impervious area within a piece of property that is located within the Water Resource Protection District. The property in question is Ninety-seventh and One-O-three Wood Street. This property has disorientation purposes. Wood Street is oriented to the left of Sheik. The site, as mentioned, is located in the general zoning district, and in other line of the O'Callaghan District is the Water Resource Protection District. There are two buildings on the site, which we showed the block of the series of self-orientation. There's a building in the north and in the south. The lot building has an address of One-O-three Wood Street, approximately sixty-thousand square feet in size. And adjacent building to the south is a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square foot building with a current address of Ninety-seventh Wood Street. The current use of both buildings is warehouses, refrigerated warehouse-type use with a single access point on to Wood Street and its general location. As part of the, my clients, accommodating tenants' needs of the property, they have asked for some additional parking to be provided. So we are here tonight to seek approval to construct sixteen additional parking spaces on area that is currently landscaped, for lack of a better term, that's supposed to be paved. These sixteen parking spaces is located in this general area right here. In addition to adding or constructing sixteen parking spaces, the Seon Group would also like to take this opportunity to rehabilitate the existing parking lot area as well, as the parking lot is showing signs of failure. So as a result of taking on this type of project, we'd also like to resurface the existing paved areas on site and also reconstruct the existing concrete pads that are located at the loading dock floors for both Ninety-seventh and One-O-three. So the concrete rework is this area right here and these pads right here. We will also be constructing ADA accessible ramp for building One-O-three, another in its location right here. So in short, what this all results in, in addition to the construction of sixteen spaces and resurfacing parking lot, it results in about a thirty-five-hundred square foot increase in the total impervious surface area on the site. As I understand the ordinance, sites within the Water Resource Protection District that render impervious surfaces between twenty-five and forty percent is subject to a special private application. At the conclusion, should this project be approved, the site will render thirty-eight percent total impervious, counting today as just that thirty-seven. So in short, that's the proposal, the application in front for approval, and would have that answer. Oh, as I mentioned, we did incorporate into the design as a result of the new parking area with enhanced drainage system, this new parking area. So as a result of this, what we propose is, in the new impervious surface area as well as the landscaping area around it, stormwater runoff will collect the catch basins that has DEP-approved sumps and environmental hood. Water will be routed through a subsurface. We call it an infiltration basin, where water will infiltrate back into the ground. Then we have made provisions for an overflow pipe that will connect back into the existing stormwater management system. Should be noted that we did prior to making application with the Board of Selectmen, a notice of intent application was filed with the Conservation Commission. They have approved the project and issued an order of condition at its meeting and at April. So that summarizes the improvements of the proposal. Would you be happy to address any comments or questions the board may have?
Concom has indicated that they did amend an order of conditions for you a couple weeks ago at their meeting. Did you send them a copy of this application?
No, I didn't.
Okay, you did, okay.
But Trish and I, she was fine with that because she had just-
All right, all right, just, yep.
But yes, there was some sort of-
Yep, yep. And the Water Department has no concerns. Planning Department did ask about a special permit from ZBA. Did you ever need to get that?
We are not subject- as we understand the project, we are not subject to-
No, I didn't think you were, but it was just, yeah. I would ask. Confirm that with them.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
The town plan talks about the need of obtaining an amended special permit. So did you have a special permit from the ZBA?
No, that's, no, we don't. So I think there was just some misunderstanding-
Yeah, I don't think they needed one.
From planning, but it just didn't require.
I don't think it ever required one, so. Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Rosenthal.
The only other question I have, and I saw it was answered, I just want you to reiterate it, is that not less than thirty-five percent of the lot area will be maintained as a natural vegetation area? In other words, of this, one of the requirements of Zone Three is, number one, no more than forty percent impervious. Number two, is that not less than thirty-five percent of the lot area remain as a natural vegetated area. And I believe you said in the body of this that that is in fact the case.
That is, yes.
Yeah, thirty-seven percent or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's my, the only issues I have, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Everybody have everything they need?
Uh huh.
Okay, could I get a motion to close the hearing, please?
So move second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We love that. On due, we have to do a poll vote. Who's saying what? This is great. Okay, so, do we have the motion for this?
Have Neil do it, please, sir.
Okay, Neil, you're good. Go for it. Mr. Rosenthal.
Madam Chairman, I move that we grant the request because, number one, it's in harmony with the purpose and the town of the WAPET bylaw, and will promote the purposes of the Water Resource Protection Districts. Two, is appropriate to the natural topography soils and other characteristics of the site to be developed. Three, will not, during construction or thereafter, have an adverse environmental impact on the aquifer recharge areas or water resources of the town. And four, will not adversely affect existing or potential water supply.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of granting the permit?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much.
Moving on. Okay, we have a continued hearing for Lot- Lot nine, that's why we keep Neil here. He had to run again, just to keep doing that. Okay, so we have a continued hearing for Christina Estates, Lot Nine. We were waiting for information on the denitrification system, which we have received. Did you wanna talk about that, or have our health agent comment on it? I think the health agent is the one who requested it, so.
Absolutely.
Come on, you gotta do something here. You're almost finished with us. We gotta put you to work.
So this property came to our attention because it's requesting a variance from the two-hundred-foot local regulation to one-hundred-and-thirty feet from the well. The state regulation is actually a hundred feet. So in an effort to still maximize the protection, the builder has agreed to put in a DEP-approved denitrification system that would give that equivalent protection for that particular property. So again, the local reg is two-hundred feet, the well is a hun- I mean, the system would be a hundred-and-thirty feet from that in lieu of the two-hundred, but still greater than the Massachusetts regulation of a hundred feet.
So you would recommend it?
I do recommend it. And I also spoke to Kayla earlier. I do think this is something that should be possibly revisited in general because it is so super restrictive. So just to have a little bit more research from either DEP and Kayla's sort of point of view as well. When this was created, originally I thought it was 2003, but it was actually amended in 2003. The wells were dug differently. There were different sort of ramifications. So I think that it may make sense to continue to at least revisit the regulation as a whole and update it as appropriate. Obviously, my respect is really important, but we also don't wanna be restricted for no reason. And if the state set it for a hundred feet, there's a reason.
Right, right. Okay, any comments or questions from the board?
And I'm sorry, Madam Chair. As part of this system, with the denitrification system, the owner would have to submit an owner, an operations and maintenance manual, and they'll also have a de-destruction of the property as well, and their will look at that. So all that paperwork would come through the Health Department office, and Kayla will review it.
Okay. Okay. Got that.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Would this come to the Health Department Office on a yearly basis when it was checked out?
Yes, sir.
So what happens if, what happens if that doesn't happen?
So there'll be a system in place through DEP as well as through the Health Department, and if that does not get properly maintained, the Health Department can go out and put an order of cease and desist, and then mandate that reparation or maintenance is submitted on a regular basis. There is a way to track that, so it would have to come through the office and be reviewed. And if there was something in O&M that was out of line, the Health Officer could give them time to correct that, and we'd have that all on file as well.
So it might seem going forward that on this two-hundred-feet thing, that anything over a hundred was the most you can get, plus the denitrification system? Is that more or less what you're saying? Okay.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Okay, any other comments from the board, questions? From the audience? Here, did you wanna say anything? You don't need to. You don't need to. Hearing none, can I please get a motion to close the hearing?
So move second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Okay, now, could I please? Could I please get a motion to grant the variance for Lot Nine on Christina Estates with the, subject to the owner submitting an operations and maintenance plan to the Health Department?
Yes.
So move second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
We're acting here as a board of health, right?
Yes, and acting as the board of health. Yes, we are.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. We're voting on it now. We're good. We don't need you anymore. Go away. It's okay.
I got a kid at work who doesn't drive yet.
That's okay. Go, go, go. Go, go, go. Okay, so this is acting as the board of health, and we do have a motion to grant the variance for Lot Nine, Christina Estates, as with the, subject to the owner submitting an operations and maintenance plan for the denitrification system. Any further comments or questions?
Madam Chair, can we add that it will be recorded in the deed into that motion?
And, and-
Recorded the deed.
And recorded in the deed? Okay, got that. So that, that's, that's subject to will be recorded in the deed as well. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Moving on. We're fast. Town managers' report.
Nope, we missed one.
Oh, we missed one. Sorry. This isn't a hearing, right?
It is, dear. It's for a workday show.
Okay, 'cause I don't have anything to really read for a hearing. Do I?
It's a yearly license.
I gave you legal notice.
I have the Monday, May 10th. For Christina Estates. I looked through here. I couldn't find it. All I have, I don't have the legal notice. Sorry.
Oh. Sorry. No, no worries. That's my bad.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, the Middleborough Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 24th, 2020, at seven forty PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at the Town Hall, Ten Nickerson Avenue, for the purpose of discussing an application filed by Artist LLC for recreational delivery marijuana license for property located at Twenty-Nine Harding Street, Assessors' Map 047, Lot 519. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Hearing is open. Go right ahead. Identify yourself and give us a summary.
My name's Sebastian Paul. I thank you guys all through the pandemic on the Zoom calls. I'm just taking my special permit and applying for our business license. We're gonna be a courier-only cannabis delivery service delivering for Panacea Wellness.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? You're all set with this, Bob?
Yeah, this is just an annual license. Cannabis companies will be required to come to the Board of Selectmen yearly.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? None from the board, none from the audience. Could I get a motion to close the hearing?
So move second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jermaine.
I'll be abstaining from this one.
Okay. All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Okay. Could I please get a motion from the board to grant the license filed by Artist LLC for a recreational delivery marijuana license for property located at Twenty-Nine Harding Street, Assessors' Map 047, Lot 519?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Nunes, now you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In my town manager's report, you have revenues, local receipts up to March 31st. So I just wanna summarize. We have exceeded motor vehicle excise by four-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-nineteen dollars over March 31st, 2020, so that's, that's good news. We did receive from July 1st to March 31st cannabis excise tax in the amount of sixty-nine-thousand-one-eighty-three. Unfortunately, meals and rooms is down from March of 2020. Meals is down by forty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-two dollars. Rooms is down a hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars. We did receive three percent of cannabis sales in the amount of sixty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. So when you combine the impact fees and the cannabis tax we have received from July to March 31st, a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-nine-twenty-eight. I know revenue did come in in the month of April of seventy-seven thousand, at least seventy-seven thousand. We'll see that in next month's, in the April report. Building permit fees are up a hundred-and-eleven-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. Health Department fees are up twenty-eight-thousand-one-one-six from three-thirty twenty-twenty, three-thirty-one, 2020. And wiring fees are up eleven-thousand-three-twenty-five. As you can see, people are still building, both commercial and residential. Unfortunately, investment income has taken a hit. It is down three-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. So when you look at the bottom-line number, March 31st, 2021, compared to March 31st, 2020, we have exceeded our estimates by a hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy dollars. So we are trending in the right direction, and I'm confident that we will exceed our revenue projections for our fiscal year 2021.
And that's during a pandemic. Thank God.
Yep, exactly. Yep. Few other things. Moving on to the town manager's report, we have established it's a work group, a local represencing work group regarding Census 2020. A population for 2020 came in at twenty-five-thousand-eight-hundred. It's an increase over the twenty-2010 census. It's done, as you know, every ten years. So we are looking at GIS. We are looking at redistricting precinct lines. There is a timeline involved. We will add an additional precinct. The boundary lines were drawn by, were drawn by the Secretary of State's office. So you'll hear more about that from the town clerk in the local represencing work group. And we will add a precinct at Nichols Middle School. The downtown improvement committee meeting met last Friday. We had a discussion of the downtown branding proposal with the, with Chandler Thinks. They were highly advantageous and scored accordingly. And we talked about the initial steps. They're gonna obviously involve community engagement, and they will make a presentation to the Board of Selectmen. Janice will coordinate that with Colleen. And that is basically the highlights of the report.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bedestine.
To you, Bob. Have you had a chance to look at creating the job description for the grant writer position?
I did speak to the Director of Economic Community Development last week, and she will work on it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Anyone else-
She did say after the community one-stop grant gets in, which is due in early June. So she will get right on it.
Anyone else from the board have any questions? Okay, moving on. No correspondence this week? Okay, we have the town managers' and executive assistants' review. Okay, I will say the, we did individual reviews and tabulated them. They were based on a scale of one to five. One being poor, two needs improvement, three meets expectations, four exceeds expectations, five extraordinary achievement. And they were graded on eleven different areas: job performance, job knowledge, personnel management, fiscal management, time management, communications, teamwork, problem-solving, creativity, and initiative above and beyond, and individual goals. We have the town managers'. His average of scores is three-point-seven-five, which is above meet expectations. It exceeds expectations. And at this point, I would open it up for anyone who wants to just give an individual comment.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jermaine.
Over the past year or so, I've gotten to know Mr. Nunes very well. I think we work well together, and we don't always agree, but I do enjoy working with him in the job he has for the town of Middleborough.
Agreed. Anyone else?
Thank you, Selectman Jermaine.
I would agree with you, Mr. Jermaine. I think we are in the financial situation we are in now because of Bob. I have seen what other towns around here, the situations, and how they did not weather the COVID pandemic well, and I think we can attribute that we did weather it well and have actually come out ahead to Bob's management. Thank you very much for that. My only comment was what I would like to see is more of the free training that's offered from MMA and MIAA for the department heads. So I think we could, we could benefit a lot from that. There are a lot of things to handle for a town, so to just find one thing like that, that's, that's what I would suggest. I would like to see that. For interdepartmental cooperation, for general morale and teamwork, and for customer service within, within our departments. That's what I would like to see. Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Demers.
I think our executive assistant should be recognized.
We're gonna do hers next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're still on Bob's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to steal Bob's.
That's okay. We're still on Bob's. Anyone else would like to make a comment or not?
I don't know.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal. is above meet expectations, um, it exceeds expectations, um, and at this point, I would open it up for anyone who wants to just give an individual comment.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jermaine.
Uh, over the past year or so, I've gotten to know Mr. Nunes very well. Uh, I think we work well together and we don't always agree, but, uh, I do enjoy working with him in the job he does for the Town of Middleborough.
Agreed. Anyone else?
Thank you, Selectman Jermaine.
Um, I would agree with you, Mr. Jermaine. Um, I think we are in the financial situation we are in now because of Bob. I have seen what other towns around here, the situations and how they did not weather the COVID pandemic well, and I think we can attribute that we did weather it well and have actually come out ahead to Bob's management. Thank you very much for that. Um, my only comment was what I would like to see is more of the free training that's offered from MMA and, um, MIA, uh, for the department heads. So I, I think we could, we could benefit a lot from that. Um, there are a lot of things to handle for a town, so to just find one thing like that, that's, that's what I would suggest. I would like to see that, um, for interdepartmental cooperation, for general morale and teamwork, and for customer service within, within our departments. That's what I would like to see. Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Demers.
Um, I think our executive assistant should be recognized.
We're gonna do hers next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're still on Bob's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to steal Bob's.
That's okay, we're still on Bob's. Anyone else would like to make a comment or not?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal.
I enjoy working with you also, Bob.
Thank you, Selectman Rosenthal.
Yep.
Rosenthal, I as well.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bettis.
Um, to echo your comments on the financial status of the town, it's been great to be able to see, um, us reach our goals, um, as far as hiring, so we're doing very well with the, um, Fire Department, getting staffing up. Uh, we were able to get the grant writer approved, that position, uh, and I think our next step would be looking at, um, an HR director, um, what that would entail.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Bob?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Demers.
Um, no, I, I think Bob has been very helpful, um, especially with me being probably the least experienced member on the board, so he's always been there to, um, to listen and, um, advise and guide me, and I appreciate it.
Okay.
So thank you.
Great, moving on. Again, Bob, thank you. It, it's been great, we're, I'm glad we still have you.
Thank you.
We didn't scare you away too much yet.
No, yeah, thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Overall, extremely above expectations, extraordinary.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to the executive assistant, we, uh, we graded her on the same criteria. I, I did remove two because they really had nothing to do with her, um, personnel management, you really don't know, and, uh, the fiscal management, you really don't do. So like, removing those, your average came up at a four.